Yeah, good evening everyone. Welcome to this evening of special session on the Integrated Business Solution paper. We are going to be looking at two case studies in this session today. Yeah, two case studies in this session today. We are going to be discussing the case study and then some questions from there. I would like to have some participation when it comes to questions and even before that if you have any queries, please do feel free to put in a query onto the chat box and I will consider it as we move forward to consider that also into the discussions. So let's look at the first case study. So what we will do is as in the previous thing, so after one case study speak, we're going to ask questions, but without waiting for all that, you could please feel free to put your questions or queries as we are going through the case study so that at that point also I will try and cover it. So today we are going to be looking at a different kind of a case study where we are going to talk about the Vada Paav. So this is a company called Vada Paavala which was trying to get automated retail of retailing of Vada Pavs, right? So that is the story about. So it's again about some disruption and revolutionizing the way things have been done all these days and what can be done newly now, right? But so we are going to be looking at it and what kind of challenges and issues which came up and how they were addressed. So it was the year nineteen, twenty twenty-one, just after COVID settled and all that. This Vada Paavala disrupted the quick service restaurant sector. Basically, these are meant to be very fast food servicing process. That is the QSR sector. So where you quickly get it ready to eat stuff which you just heat and give or put it on a tawa and give and things like that. They are QSR sector. Essentially, these replace the small vendors who are using hand cards, et cetera, et cetera, and doing so largely this segment tries to replace or bring in something similar to what happens in such small outlets. Now, what are the pros and cons? I am not going into that right now. We will be looking at it. All right. But the thing is today people are expecting more and more. So there is an opportunity here also. Imagine if you go into a mall and there is an equipment which spews out Vada Paav to you on a press of a button like you are getting a Coke bottle or this thing. So that's exactly what they tried to bring in here. So what they were doing, they were combining automation with Vada Paav, which is India's iconic street food. How to make it in an automated manner so that this is available, unique thing is available across, right? So it was all based on kiosks that prepare fresh Vada Pavs in under two minutes. So essentially, this is expecting that the food will get prepared in kiosks in under two minutes and freshly made. It's not that, you know, this is just taking something and giving, but obviously some portion of what is required to go in and all that will have to have been pre-prepared like it happens in any Vada Paav stall, right? And what is the opportunity here could have it in metro stations, you could have it in IT parks, universities. So today's younger generation is looking for more hygienic and better presented food. So this helps in many ways in terms of the hygiene factor, quality factor, et cetera, if you can get across the right this thing. So this immediately caught on and it scaled rapidly with appropriate financial planning and compliance. So that is what happened to this business from twenty twenty-one. It's really scale unique idea and disruption brought in by the investor, first phase, right? The first phase focused more on innovation and financial strategy, right? So during this period, the focus was on getting funding. Each machine was costing about five lakhs. Now that's a significant amount and if you want to really reach out, it's a large amount to invest, right? Five lakhs is a lot large amount to invest per equipment, per vending machine. So the company went and raised a two crore seed funding. So two crore could give nearly forty equipments in different locations. So it was a significant jump which can be made in terms of what it can look at. The NPV for break even was in eight months with a sixty percent margin. These foods have very high margins. So that is something we need to keep in mind. These foods, generally food stuff itself will have very high margin, margin. Whether it'll ultimately translate to profit will depend on various other costs which are there. But at gross margin level, they have significant margins. So that's something we should bear in mind, right? And then the company also looked at options like operating lease model. So for that purpose, they had an agreement with an NBFC for up to fifty lakhs at a twelve percent interest cost, right? So these are things which came about from the initial phase one where the company was looking at how to grow. One second. So this idea of going in for partly a leasing model was to enhance the ability of the company to increasing numbers to be put onto the this thing without upfront capital raise. So capital raise of two crores was made, but that only reached a certain level. By taking another fifty lakhs, you have another ten machines which can be reached, right? So that is a significant jump over the what was planned. Then looking at the costing and the break even strategy, what was understood was that the standard cost of Vada Paav was eighteen rupees, right? So with that eighteen rupees as the standard cost, there was continuous monitoring to ensure that the variations are limited and variations are continuously monitored to ensure that the price advantages are protected. One of the key ingredients in a Vada Paav is all the spices and the spice mix which goes in and generally spice prices fluctuate very heavily in the market. Sorry. So spice prices fluctuate in the market. So one of the steps which the company looked at and took was to go in for some forward contracts, which means a long period contract for spices. So that there is a protected pricing for some of the key ingredients which can significantly affect the pricing. So this is one thing which they looked at, right? Now, while that was being done, the company was also using latest technologies like IoT enabled monitoring on the equipment itself to ensure that the downtime of the machine was limited and there is a constant production and output happening from the vending machines. That is also very important because most of these are vending machines which are not even manned fully, right? So it is highly dependent on the efficacy of the vending machine to perform. So it's like the ATM machines. If you go and it doesn't work, well, it's not operating. So to that extent, your efficiencies are reduced, but you are still incurring cost on it. That equipment either you have purchased or you have leased, there is a cost on it to you, but it is not servicing. So it cannot give you a return. So ensuring minimum downtime is very, very critical in making these assets give you a better return. And it becomes even more so important in equipments like this which are put out in the public with no physical monitoring by employees who are there working with it, et cetera. So we are used to so used to having factories where employees work on it and they also use the equipments or the machinery. So if something was not okay, they are going to immediately notice and act on it, et cetera. Here are cases where the equipments are in all over the place and there is no individual human being who is actually monitoring these. So to make up for that, what can you do? You can depend on digitalization and technology for that also. So Internet of Things enables monitoring of these equipments from an off-site perspective based on information which keeps coming automatically from the equipments regularly. So these are things which they were looking at. Anyway, that kind of connectivity was required between the machine and the central setup for various purposes, including building, including control over the collections, et cetera, vis a vis utilization of material, availability of stock so that replenishments can be sent to the vending machine, et cetera. So all this was being done through IoT capabilities which are being used. So a detailed break even analysis was revealing that the monthly fixed cost was around four lakh twenty-five thousand, right? Monthly fixed costs were around four lakh twenty-five thousand and a contribution margin of thirty per serving. This company had to sell fourteen thousand one sixty-seven Vada Pavs per month to break even. So there was a significant amount of sales which had to happen for breaking even because the monthly fixed costs were high at four lakh twenty-five thousand. Whereas the contribution margin was thirty. How is this thirty coming? More or less it's like this, eighteen is the cost we saw, right? Eighteen plus thirty, which is the margin, forty-eight will be the selling price, right? The standard cost of eighteen plus the contribution of thirty, which is forty-eight will be the selling price roughly, right? And thirty on forty-eight is roughly sixty percent return also, which is what we were talking about earlier, sixty percent margin. So there is a significant margin per unit, but you needed fourteen thousand units to be breaking even. So each machine averaged about five hundred servings per day, right? So within three months, the company was already in profitability position. So very quick turnarounds are possible in this. So this was what was found and this is how they grew significantly. That is the phase one where they grew. Then came the phase two, which was the scaling up. Now, they wanted to grow much bigger. Now, how do you scale up? You have so many things which needs to be addressed. So when you scale up, one of the major things they were finding as a challenge was some operational issues and compliance issues. So one of the things they found was food safety and standards compliance. That is, there is an authority in India called Food Safety and Standards Authority of India. So what is the role of Food Safety and Standards Authority of India? They lay down the guidelines for food stuff to be sold. What can be sold? What are the minimum requirements, et cetera, for that, right? And there is also a lot of licensing requirement. Every outlet will have to have a license. There are also there are also requirements of getting your factory approved, lot of such requirements which come up. So initially what was happening, there was a lack of batch traceability which was there. So one of the broad concepts under FSSAA is that the input batch should be traceable. So in a Vada Paav, what are the major inputs? They are buying Paav from somebody or we are getting it, right? Paav was one major ingredient. Then the the vegetables which are going in to make the Paav, Vada, which is largely potato and some onion, some chilies, et cetera, and then the various spices and oil. There is also oil which is used. There are also spices which are used, right? So which batch was used in which equipment on what day? It's important to keep a track to be able to trace back if there are any issues, quality issues, to be able to trace back to the supplier of that batch of materials. So it became important to have that traceability. So what was happening, the materials were coming from various suppliers. It came to a central base. Then from there, it is being given to all these forty fifty vending machines in different parts, right? So when that happens, all these forty fifty machines may get different batches of material which had come into the central place. So which batch went to which unit? So where the problem was identified, so it can be traced back, traced back. So that is something which was missing. The whole thing was then looked at and Vada Paavala addressed this by introducing QR code read receipts. So every pack had some simple QR code. And that QR code gave the full indication of what was in it, et cetera. So now also all these big commerce companies, if you go and see, they use this QR codes extensively to transport or transit a lot of information about traceability in through the bags where the QR code is put in. Here similarly, the company introduced QR codes on each packing, right? To ensure that all the traceability is fixed so when the oil or the materials which are in packed condition moves from the warehouse to various locations, which patch went to which location is completely traceable because this QR code is captured both at the dispatching side and the receiving side. So this addressed a significant concern and that was one major thing which was positive for the company to achieve, for enabling them to scale. The second issue which was there on regulatory side, one was from the FSSAA. The second issue which came was from the GST classification. So there were two schools of thought, right? Whether Vada Paav should be taxed at five percent, which is prepackaged or zero percent being freshly prepared. I'm just using assumed numbers here, right? So that this was another big challenge to identify to identify whether which GST classification it should come under appropriately, right? That is the next area of gray area or doubt which one could get and that was being one second, somebody is yeah. So how did the company address this? The company addressed this by having the equipment also have Internet of Things solutions under timestamp, right? To say when each Vada Paav was actually prepared by the machine. So this way, it could prove that the Vada Paav is freshly prepared or it and it's not a prepackaged goods which is being sold there. And this led to a zero percent GST classification, thereby reducing costs. So this is important to understand. So if you really look at it, what goes into making this, right? Many of the materials are zero GST category and when the finished product has GST, then there is an added cost because it is also being sold to end customer. There is no input credit available right to the other party also. So there is an added cost. So the moment it was proved that it was freshly prepared and because of that, there is no charge on it, no GST charge on it, there was straight away cost reduction which was happening there also. Right? So this was the second thing which the company had to face and address from a regulatory perspective. Then of course it was expanding, right? It was expanding and expanding and expanding. There were a lot of NOC requirements. There are also need to collaborate with malls, et cetera, right? So let's look at the first requirement of NOC. So typically, all these you know, the street food suppliers or street food vendors, they have to get NOCs from the municipal authority to sell street food. So similar thing was applicable when the company wanted to set up say kiosks in public areas like said metro stations, et cetera. It required NOC from municipal authorities. Now, if you want to have reach, you need to be able to put it in multiple places. So which means you have to go with the required regulatory compliances also and approvals also. So one of the key things which was required was the NOC from the municipal authorities. So to ensure that all this is being addressed, et cetera, Vada Paavala came up with strategic partnerships with either mall operators or metro rail corporations for streamlining the whole approval process. So there was responsibility clearly placed to get these approvals because the mall would be doing for many other stops so they can get for one more, right? So that way they were able to of obtaining these approvals and getting it done. So this was something which was sad and distracting others also on the screen. Thank you. And only those who write can actually rub it off unfortunately. So that's also there, yeah. The next part of the challenge were around inventory and pricing. So let's look at the inventory. The whole idea is to keep it under control. So you don't keep too much inventory. Why you should not keep too much inventory? It is for multiple reasons. First is more inventory means more cost, carrying cost, more working capital requirement. Then this is food products and you are putting into the vending machine, which means it's partly processed or or partly cleaned, et cetera, et cetera, whatever stage it is in. So the more you keep there and the possibility of waste getting enhanced is more.
It may get stale quickly. So, sorry.
Yes, yes. Yes, yes, absolutely. So to not keep so much in one place is always better, especially in food products. Because these are short shelf life food products, that too. These are not long shelf life food products. Now, when you go to a supermarket or any this thing, you will find different kinds of products. Products are like provisions and all that will have a three months, six months life cycle. Then at the other end, you will have vegetables, et cetera, which probably can theoretically kept for two, three days because there is no licensing requirement on it. But then there are products like cakes, there are products like these which are made, there are requirements under law also that it should be consumed within one day or it should be sold within one day or destroyed. Right? So there are restrictions. So the more stock you keep, yes, these being perishable in nature, the waste will be more. So multiple reasons to keep the stock on just in time management and that required a constant monitoring. How do you consistently ensure that you manage the stock well? So the system, because it's all interconnected, it is all today, there is a lot of Internet of Things available. So the system itself will automatically send an alert when roughly the stock level is ten percent of the capacity. So that there is stock which keeps coming whenever there is a need. But the stock is not put in in heavy quantity but periodically replenished. So that is why you will find many of these perishable shops will have multiple supplies happening daily itself. They won't get everything once a week, once a day of that. They will get even three times a day supplies. So that they can keep the freshness and also ensure that the inventory level is not significantly The company also did another unique thing. They found that the sales during eight and ten AM was a peak period for demand. So they introduced dynamic pricing where the prices were ten rupees higher during the peak period. Two things happened because of this. One is you get higher revenue because many people who choose to take this would not mind an extra small cost for the convenience of getting it at that point of time. And anyway, it is the breakfast. So you need it. And anyway, it is the breakfast, so you need it, that's it. The second thing is there are people who may delay it. By which what happens is because there is a demand and supply scenario happening during the peak hour, you will not be able to take all the orders which are coming your way because you have only limitation on how much you can make in a given hour. You meaning the machine, correct? So, when some people switch to a non-peak hour, those who are anywhere taking during the peak hour, more people can be served. So, overall more people can be served. So, the benefit comes from two things. One is the ten rupee increase during that period. The second is that overall in a given day, more people can be serviced. So, this is an added advantage which comes from this kind of arrangement which taught him, right? So, these are the steps which were taken essentially to ensure that the various aspects, be it compliance side or be it on inventory or be it on pricing strategy, the appropriate solution for what is good for them has been introduced. Then after the phase two came the phase three, which is the sustainable growth phase, right? From twenty twenty four onwards. So, they introduce a franchisee model, right? Now till now it was on a own model, right? Now that they have already established well, they have earned the name, their brand recognition, they have good customer recall, customer is happy with the product and their cost models have been tested etc. Now, the company enters into an expansion, wilder expansion or wider expansion, right? So, how do you do it? You do it through a franchise model so you can grow faster, right? So, what did they do? They said, okay, we will sell you the equipment at four lakhs and we will retain twenty percent margin. So, the franchisees were able to set it up and they were able to get quickly on ground because now you are making hundreds of entrepreneurs pay for your capex for expanding. Pay for your capex, spend the time and efforts to identify the location, do various surveys, find out the background, get into lease agreements, get the equipment and set it up. All that becomes the headache of the individuals. And that enabled the company to expand into multiple cities like Bangalore, Mumbai and all that. So, this was a major jump which happened. Along with that, see what happens in all this is there is also there is also a need to think differently. So, what did they find? They found that there is a lot of time and effort which is available or space which is available in the kiosk, right? The vending machine which could be monetized, which could be monetized. Now, what did they do with that? They looked at the possibility of advertisements being made through these kiosk screens while you are waiting for your order or while you are processing the order etc. Or when there is any free time on the screen etc. So, they introduced, they introduced this concept of advertising on the kiosk. Now, this advertising can give additional revenues to the company because you are spread across so many locations and it is automated, it is digital, the advertisement can keep happening. This is another form of revenue required to be able to justify from a various perspective. The next aspect which is to be looked at is the cost optimization. Now, the company employed activity based costing to identify that machinery maintenance was thirty percent of the cost. Machinery maintenance was thirty percent of the cost. And when they looked at it, they identified possibilities of identified the possibilities of outsourcing the maintenance. Now, this outsourcing of maintenance, the company estimated could give ten thousand rupees per machine, ten thousand rupees per machine per month as benefit. Somebody has asked about the margin. Now, when a franchise is done, there is some margin which has to come to the company. So, what is that company going to get? So, there are in a franchise, there are two parties now doing the business. The individual entrepreneur who takes the particular location on franchise and he invests four lakhs for the equipment and he is going to sell. Now, when he sells, he makes the profit. Now, what will this company get? Vada Power Vale should get some money, right? Because it is not just the equipment mission. It is the innovation, it is the thought, it is the business model which has gone into it also. There is some return which has to come in addition to the capex. So, that was to come by twenty percent of the sales being the margin for the Vada Power Vale. That would probably give you an idea where is that twenty percent coming from, right? So, twenty percent of sales will get passed on. Vada Power Vale. Now, machine cost is five lakhs, why it will be given for four lakhs? Now, when you do on scale, you will be able to, that is how you attract people to make it business effective. So, initially the machines were costing five lakhs, right? By doing scaling up in production of these, you get some benefits and more importantly, you promise it at such beneficial pricing only, more investors would be interested in putting money into it. So, it is the scaling up, because of the scaling up, you get benefits. So, that is how you reduce that. So, similarly, the next thing they looked at was, okay, my biggest, another biggest cost is my power because this whole equipment continuously work on electric power. It's a vending machine, right? I cannot run vending machine on gas etc. I mean theoretically it is difficult, right? So, ideal choice of energy is electricity and that's how it's generally designed. And because of that, electricity cost is one of the largest cost to the company outside of the material cost. So, what did they do for that? They looked at solar powered machines. So, wherever solar power can be harnessed, can it be harnessed for the purpose of this machine so that the cost can be reduced significantly? And this actually led to a energy cost savings of forty percent. So, these are the sustainable growth steps which were being taken by the company to grow into the future. So, with all this, what was happening? They had reduced maintenance cost by about ten thousand rupees per machine, right? Then they put in ABC costing which gave that benefit. Then they also went in for solar powered kiosks. There is a forty percent energy savings. Now, all this, when you look at and rework your future projections and profitability based on this and do a DCF valuation, you get a significant enhanced valuation also for the company. So, which is what happened in the case of this company, the valuations went. Now, at this point, we come to the first set of questions coming from these case studies. So, we will look at these questions and I look forward to your answers also as we go through. So, the first one is Vada Power Vale used net present value to evaluate investments in vending machine. What was the primary object advantage of this effort? So, somebody has said option B, any other thoughts? What was the primary advantage of NPV method being used to evaluate? So, somebody has said option B, which is evaluated profitability by accounting for time value of money, right? So, that is very important and critical. That is why we call it as net present value, right? So, what you will get in future when it is discounted to the current, that is the net present value. That is the net present value. So, what is NPV? NPV discounts future cash flow's present value. So, you are going to get some money in future, right? So, here Vada Power Vale is going to put five lakhs per machine. That was the initial other thing, right? And it will give profitability in a period of eight months or so. That theoretically when it works out is essentially going to give you the current value, net present value. So, what you look at, what is the investment versus the return over the long period? That return in current town's value discounted to current town. So, when you compare these two, if your returns are more than the investment, then it is worth doing the investment. That is the idea. The second question is surround leasing, right? So, why did Vada Power Vale for operational leasing of vending machines? Is it to avoid FSSA compliance because the machines do not belong to me, so I don't have to get a license? To reduce upfront capital expenditure? To eliminate GST liabilities because I am not buying the machine, GST is not mine? To maximize equity dilution? So, to dilute more equity in the process of doing this. What's your thought on this?
To maximize equity dilution, sir.
Option B, sorry, somebody said something.
Option B to maximize equity dilution.
Okay, somebody says option D to maximize equity dilution. And some people have said D, right? So, let's look at it and then we will discuss the two options which have been put out. So, the right answer is option B to reduce upfront capital expenditure. By leasing, you are delaying the payouts, right? And essentially converting a capital expenditure to a revenue or a periodic expenditure. Now, I will also explain why it is not D. By leasing, you are going to use less of equity. So, you are not maximizing the equity dilution, you are minimizing the dilution here. If I had to buy the equipment, I have to spend more money, which means I will have to raise more equity, which means I will have to dilute more. Whereas when I go for leasing, I don't have to raise the same amount of equity, I can raise less. So, actually I am minimizing my equity dilution. So, that is the key difference there. Hope that was clear. And this is on MCQ two. Then let's look at the third question, which is on variance analysis. So, Vada Power Vale was having a standard cost of eighteen per serving, right? Now, during a period because there were potato shortages, we saw that we had entered into forward contracts for spices but not for potato, right? Potato was left open. Potato was left open. So, when the actual cost of serving went up from eighteen to twenty-two because of potato shortages, what is this type of variance represented? Is it a favorable efficiency variance? Is it an adverse material price variance? Is it a capacity variance or is it a sales volume variance? Yeah, some people, many have said B. Yes, so when so many have said B, cannot be anything else, I suppose, right? I think I have put the wrong answer here. So, it is not C, it is B only, you are right, the slide is wrong. It's so let's, you are right. Okay, this is not, this answer is from somewhere else, it's a error. So, essentially it is an adverse, first of all, the cost has gone up, so it is adverse. Material price, it is because of potato, material price variance, right? So, the next one is about GST classification. Sorry, I think somebody has something there, let me look at it. Yeah. Okay, price has risen to twenty-two, correct? So, it's a material price variance and it is adverse, absolutely.
Answer is B. It proved real time cooking qualified.
It, answer is D, it operated outside India.
B.
B, okay, B, sorry. Okay, so in this case, again people are saying B. Is it that I have put all MCQs as B as answer? Looks like it, right? That was not intentional. Why did Vada Power Vale classify food under zero percent GST initially, right? It was a charitable organization, obviously it's not, they are making money. It proved real time cooking qualified as freshly prepared. This is what we are talking about, now the company had because it is using IoT, they were able to timestamp when the each of the Vada Power was being manufactured or prepared by the equipment. It was being freshly made. See, there is a difference between the normal vending machine and these kind of quick service kiosks. In a vending machine, what happens? It stores and it delivers, only two functions are there. But in a quick service kiosk, what actually happens is it stores materials, it converts and converges them into a product and then produces the product or disposes the product. Now, the example I have talked about here might look outwardly. Of course, in India itself, somebody has done something similar but not Vada Power, some other Indian food. Of course, in India itself, somebody has done something similar, but not Vada Power, some other Indian food. Quick service machine, they have brought out. So this is not a concept which is only theory. These are things which are being done already. And internationally, there are with the robot technologies for cooking, right? There are cook robos and all that which have come and generally many of these international food preparation is also based on three or four different categories of cooking related this thing. So they have been able to create some equipments which automate the whole process and deliver fresh food, freshly made food, right? So it is not unique, it's internationally there. Even in India, for an Indian food, it has already been done, probably you can do it. This case study is based on a parallel drawn from some other practical happening in India, right? Or at least inspired by that shortly. So B is the right answer here, coming back. It proved real-time cooking because of the technology which they use in the equipments. They are able to identify and maintain records of when each of those were manufactured and supplied to the customer. So freshly prepared, right? So all of you have already talked about it and told that is the thing. What compliance risk did Vada Power Valley mitigate by adding Q R codes to its receipts? Income tax evasion, F S S A requirement for ingredient level traceability, labor law violation, environmental penalties. Now something really is jinxed, everything is B, right? M C Q one to M C Q five is B, please do not do this in the exam hall. Everything may not be B, right? So it will be different, you will have to look at, but yes, many of you have answered right.
It's B.
Yes, sorry.
A I requirements for end degree.
Correct. It's F S S A requirement for ingredient level traceability. So that is what was being addressed in this. Now, interestingly, like I was mentioning, all the quick commerce companies also use Q R codes very heavily. Next time you have a supply made by one of these quick service companies, you look at their paper bag in more detail, you will find some Q R codes online. Those Q R code actually contain details which help them in this digitalized management of the whole process. So there are phenomenal amount of learnings and new how technology is changing the way businesses are being done. So this is a serious disruptor in the market. Now somebody might actually come up with a M K machine to make Vada Power, I am not sure, but maybe somebody will do. But there are many such things which are just waiting to be there and you will be seeing it. And probably this will change the color of how food is being sold, especially street food, which is the real fast food, fastest food, right? Yeah, so let's also look at the descriptive type questions coming from this. So the first question is, Vada Power Valley opted to lease A I powered vending machines across metro stations and I T parks. The cost of each machine was five lakhs. The company compared outright purchase with leasing and choose chosen operating lease structure supports scalability. The required things are, assess the strategic rationale behind choosing leasing over outright purchase with specific reference to Vada Power Valley's startup stage and working capital cycle. Use the relevant decision framework to evaluate the financial impact of leasing decision. Discuss the importance of liquidity and capital structure flexibility in such decisions. Now, there are three broad outlines which have been given. See, one thing I should tell you, there is no given this thing that leasing is better than buying always or buying is better than leasing always. It varies depending on various factors and the company's current position, et cetera. There are significant amount of changes which can happen, right? So bear that in mind and please put your thoughts, whatever thoughts you have on this, on screen, on chat and let's discuss the issues. What are the strategic rationale behind choosing leasing over outright purchase? Especially considering the Vada Power Valley's startup stage and working capital cycle. The second is relevant decision framework to evaluate the financial impact of leasing. And the third is to discuss the importance of liquidity and capital structure, right? So any thoughts on this? Let me just hover there for a minute to see if you have some specific thoughts which you want to put out and then we can look at the answers. Okay, so let's look at the pointers to the answer, pointers to the answers. So first, let's look at the strategic rationale. So what are the strategic rationale? First and foremost, leasing preserved liquidity and avoided capex burden. So if I had to put ten machines, fifty lakhs will have to be spent. So if I have capital, fifty lakhs will immediately go away and become machinery. Whereas by going in for leasing, I am protecting this fifty lakhs, though I will have to pay a little more on an annual basis, right? So the first thing is leasing preserved liquidity. The second is, so somebody raised the question about twelve percent interest on leasing. Even capital has a cost, we have to understand that, capital has a cost. As a startup, today if I issue capital, probably it will be at ten rupees. But if I scale up and issue capital, I can get twenty rupees per share. So what will happen is by pushing this, I may be getting at a much better pricing. So there are, these are the things that I was telling, you know, there is always a pro and con you need to look at. There is not one single thing which is always right and the other thing not wrong. So there is no black and white, it's always gray, right? It depends on each case. If it was not dependent on each case, we don't need this theory itself and we don't need to work out cost versus buy model, cost versus lease model. Why we should work out if it is a standard answer? The reason why we are working out it, it can vary depending on the case and what are the objectives. Now let's look at the other end of the this thing, there are companies like like let's say the Zomatos of the world. They have raised so much of capital. Now it will be foolish for them to go and take borrowings because they are sitting on cash. If you take companies like, let's say, Google. Google is sitting on huge pile of cash. So why would they ever borrow? They would never borrow, for them it would not make sense to borrow. They get capital at a very, very cheap rate. So they would rather take that than use the this thing. Whereas a startup is in early stage, the promoters do not want to give up equity too much because that would mean any big boost in value, they will lose out heavily. So by delaying it, it becomes very good to this thing. The second thing, these machines can become operational very quickly. And if you look at the model in most restaurants, this is a very interesting model. Your collection is immediate because in a vending machine, you collect cash immediate. But some of your suppliers may be at cash, but some of your supplies may be at credit. So on one side you get credit, on the other side you get cash. So you may end up having negative working capital. So which means the more you keep selling, you will have more cash available with you which can be used for paying up the lease rentals. So there is also a constant cash generation which happens. This is unlike a scenario where you also have given extended credit and sell. So with increasing sales, you will have to also invest into working capital. Petrol pumps, restaurants are generally a good indicator for companies which have negative working capital. That is the more sales they make, the more cash they will be sitting on because the sales is collected immediately, but the purchases are paid with the delay. Partly at least, right? So the more sales you make, more networking capital is getting released to you, so the more cash you are sitting on. So there it makes again an interesting case for going in for leasing because that cash can be used for payments, you don't, you won't have a continuing straight. The next is that by going in for leasing, you are allowed faster rollout. Very quickly you can enter into multiple locations, which actually puts you into the benefit because right now you have a low entry barrier. Then the third thing is partly if you structure well, the maintenance risk could be transferred to the vendor. Equipment maintenance risk could be transferred to the vendor because he is supplying it to you on an operating lease model instead of a financial lease. So it becomes his responsibility to ensure that the machines are working. So look at it from his point of view, what is the benefit for him? A, he gets to sell more, where he would have sold forty equipments to you, now he can sell fifty equipments to you. So he gets better revenue. Second, he is going to get compensated by interest for the delay in payment, one side far enough. And because he is in this business, maintenance for him is something easy to do and he can even have some preventive maintenance kind of a process by which he can ensure that your uptime is better. Overall, he also benefits from better prepayments to him. The second part of the question is about leasing decision evaluation, right? So this is looking at whether the cost of leasing is less than cost of capital into initial investment outlay. So that's what I was saying, that capital doesn't come without a cost, it has a cost. Second issue which needs to be considered is not only just the cost of capital, sometimes even when the cost of capital is cost of leasing is higher than the cost of capital, you may still go because you don't have choices. Cash flow impact is favorable in the first two years. In this case, that's what will happen. Suddenly now because of doing this, what happens is instead of having a huge cash outflow, you can reduce the cash outflow and spread it over the period from collections which are going to come from sales. So there is a significant benefit for you while leasing it. And then leasing allowed monthly payments from operating margin. So there is a significant margin in this business. So that is the money we are going to use for paying rather than anything upfront. So leasing decision evaluation is made using all this. So typically, one arithmetic calculation we all do is find out the cost of capital versus cost of leasing, et cetera. But we also need to look at what is the working capital pressure, whether that is practically feasible or not. So sometimes, just for that practical feasibility, you may have to still go for leasing because you can't afford to take that kind of a working capital pressure on. The third aspect about discussing on liquidity and capital structure flexibility. Now, if you have a lower debt equity, it improves your future borrowing capacity, which is very important. That's something you need to balance, right? And a leasing model aligns with the startup strategy because in a startup, what is most important is cash. So the more cash you sit on, the longevity of your thought is higher because startups take time to mature into a stable revenue generating, profit generating entity and cash flow generating entity, right? So that being the case, in startup, if you have a pile of cash you are sitting on, it will take you longer, right? It will protect you for longer. Otherwise, the startup will suddenly fail if they are not able to find further capital. So in a startup strategy, cash is considered king. So if you are sitting with more cash, the better. So initial burn, if you can reduce it, it always improves. Even though you might be within having that capital, not to deploy it, it's a very good strategy. Okay, with that, now let's look at the second question, right? The second question is, Vada Power Valley faced regulatory scrutiny for selling unclassified food under zero percent G S T and missing batch traceability under F S S A. We discussed both this earlier. The company used real-time I O T cooking laws and Q R coded receipts to justify its classification and compliance. Now, what is required is identify the key audit risks in classifying food under zero percent G S T in a vending environment. Two, explain how batch traceability can be audited in automated service model using tech-enabled tools. And C, evaluate the role of internal audits in ensuring regulatory readiness for expansion. So whenever you are going to be doing expansion, your processes should also be ready, your controls should also be ready. So what is the role of internal audit in ensuring regulatory readiness for expansion? These are the three broad strokes. Anyone wants to put some thoughts here? Okay, so let's go into the answers on this question. So first is with regard to the G S T auditors. By classifying food under zero percent G S T in a vending environment, there is a possibility of misclassification under G S T due to hybrid preparation models, right? That could be stored delivery plus this. So both being charged at zero percent, which could become an issue. So we need to be very, very clear, right? About these things. Because when you sell in a combination and all that, there are rules for that. If you sell a burger and a Coke, and the Coke is a vending machine and delivery, the burger is manufactured, then it being sold as a combo, there is an issue, the higher rate will apply. And the higher rate will be for the Coke which is delivered as a stored product. So these kind of issues can come up. Then input tax credit claims based on wrong tax rate. So if you are doing this, you need to also not take input tax credits, et cetera. So that is another major thing you need to take care, right? Then possibility of underreporting or misreporting invoices because it's zero percent, there is no other item to reconcile with. For example, if it was a five percent, all goods are chargeable at five percent, you can see how much G S T has been computed and paid on your sales, you can do some reconciliations from an audit perspective. But if it is zero. But if it is zero, obviously you can't because there is no tax on it. There is no second item with which you can cross verify. So if some invoices are not reported etcetera, it may not be identified easily. There may be other methods by which it can be done, but from an audit perspective, these are things which can come up in the case of a zero percent GST. So I wanted to give you a flavor of not only from the GST angle but from an audit perspective also how this could create control issues or may require some other control or testing requirement for audit. Right? Let's look at the second part of this question, which is about batch traceability. So in terms of batch traceability, QR code integration enabled item wise trail. So you can trace where the material came from and which batch it came from. So each transaction can be linked to the ingredient origin. So the audit can match machine launch with batch dispatched record. So everything is being digitalized. You can have a complete trail back to back. And role of internal audit. Most important thing is it should identify non-compliance is very early in the process because you are going to be also significantly scaling up. Recommend control improvements for, for example, automation of HSN classification. Why it should be manually done, should be automated, right? Then it should facilitate readiness for third-party audits and IPO disclosure standards. So there because you are going to be in the realm of being open to various compliance requirements. Internal audit should ensure that the processes are such that it makes the company ready for third-party audits. Now with that, let's go to the third descriptive question which is on the cost review, right? This case we saw that the Vada Paavala was using activity-based costing and they discovered that machine maintenance accounted for thirty percent of total operating costs. So it was a significant amount of cost was being spent on of the operating cost was spent on machine maintenance. The company outsources maintenance services saving ten thousand per month per machine. So in this case, create a ABC framework identifying the keys cost pools and cost drivers relevant to Vada Paavala's model. So what is Vada Paavala's model and in that what are the key cost pools and cost drivers? The second is to analyze the strategic benefit of outsourcing machine maintenance. So again like leasing versus buying etcetera, there is a outsourcing versus doing internally. And the third is arising from that, how can such insights improve franchisee level performance, monitoring and investor confidence? So when we are scaling up at the franchisee level, on a significant basis, we are going to be scaling up, right? How these insights can improve franchisee level performance monitoring? And also because of the way we do things can give better investor confidence because when we are going to expand so much, we are also going to get more and more investors coming in, right? How do we get their confidence? These are the three aspects on which we are going to look at. Now, let's look at each of those. First of all, the ABC framework example. Cost pool and cost drivers for say missionary maintenance could be the maintenance cost and the cost driver could be hours used per day. How many hours I am using it, which is what is giving me a maintenance cost. Then inventory refill. So the material has to be refilled periodically. The cost pool is logistic. Somebody has to transport things and all that. So the logistics cost is the key this thing now pool there and the cost driver will be number of units refilled. Right? That's what would be the criteria. And for software updates because we are using tech-enabled equipments, the whole business is tech-enabled because without that this business model itself will fail. So obviously software update is a major thing. The cost pool will be the IT overhead and the cost driver could be number of transactions logged. So how many uh sales are happening etcetera, etcetera. How many transactions are being logged? Could be a cost driver by which it can be allocated. So what is the ABC framework for which costs, how do you allocate? For each activity. ABC is activity-based costing. I suppose you have looked at specific cases on that. Right? So let's look at the second part of it. What are the strategic benefits of outsourcing? One, as it has been indicated, ten thousand rupees per month savings is there. Then like the second thing I was talking about, the vendor, because he is manufacturing the equipments, he has much more expertise than we have on the equipment. His understanding will be better. So overall, it may actually give you brute uptime. And third thing is for the core management of Vada Paavala. The focus can be on their core, which is to grow their service. Right? Rather than manage the ferry ferry, which is maintenance of machines. So the focus was clearly on sales and growth and not on maintenance etcetera, which is incidental from a perspective of the Vada Paavala management. Coming to performance monitoring and investor confidence. With all this, the franchisees gain clearer cost benchmarks. So they know this is the better benchmarks which are available. So they can also try and see if they can benefit from that. The outsourcing increases predictability of margins. So very clear that there are fixed payouts which have to be made and your margins are very clearly known. The investors also see improved a bit because of all this and standardized operations. Everywhere similar operations because the focus is right on top of this. So with this, at this point, we are coming to end of session one. Uh, we could do two things. We could take some questions now or actually we can take a break. It's uh yeah nearly seven fifty. We can reassemble at eight. Take the second case study also and then have some question answer time. So probably a ten minute break and we will restart at eight o'clock sharp. Hope that is fine with everyone.
Yes, sir.
electronic vehicle electric vehicle businesses. There is a significant shift which was happening. So this was a manufacturer of an internal combustion engine. So if you look at a fuel based engine like a diesel car or a petrol car and all that the internal combustion engine was the key the heart of the whole thing right. So this was a manufacturer of an internal combustion engine right for vehicles and now with the EV coming in this internal combustion engine is going to be no longer relevant at least for the EV industry. Of course the shift will take time but slowly the shift will be happening. So this company ABC Auto Components it was a Indian company midsize company it was specializing in manufacturing of internal combustion engine transition systems and engine parts. So it was in the midst of rapid obsolescence which was emerging. While this was the story on one side there was a steep revenue drop of forty percent to the company over the years and its debt equity stood at two point five and there was a mounting inventory of unsold ice parts. ABC was slowly going towards bankruptcy this was what was happening at that time. Additionally it also had problems with unresolved GST input credit there are FEMA non-compliance in foreign vendor payments and there were lapses in board level governance which raised regulatory flags. So with a serious possibility of the company going under the insolvency and bankruptcy code the company took a bold step to reinvent itself. So this case study looks at the transformation considering the various requirements under strategic financial management cost management capital budgeting and at the same time also looking at regulatory compliance and risk management. So let's look at it in the phases how it went about right. The first one was all about financial survival and the restructuring. First thing is to ensure that I am alive then comes everything else when you have hit the rock bottom the most important thing to do immediately is to say how you can stay alive. So what did they look at right. So the first and foremost thing they did or one of the key things they did was to restructure the debt. They renegotiated with the lenders with also a moratorium on principal remittance for a period and converting into a longer term pay repayments. So this was one major step they took. The second thing they did see as I was mentioning this was a one time successful and prominent internal combustion engine and transmission systems and other part manufacturer. So he was it was not that they were bankrupt from day one. So they had some pedigree. In the process in those days when they were growing they had built a plant in Pune which when the sales have dropped has become dormant. Now that Pune plant originally when they built it and all that was way back when the prices were lower and the city was smaller now Pune has grown there was a huge capital appreciation potential there there is seventy five crores of money which was available there. So as an immediate step this dormant plant was sold by the company raising seventy five crores. The third thing they did was as I mentioned the company had a pedigree it was just that the company was not kept well but because the shareholders have in the past benefited significantly they were well off right. So there was a two hundred crore rights issue which was also done to bring in money. So with all this they delivered the balance sheet and reduced their debt equity from two point five to one point one. So these were some immediate steps which were taken. Now not all companies are successful in having promoters and shareholders sitting with money to readily invest in the case of a distress. So but in this company because of its history now why it is going towards inching towards sickness not because it was mismanaged it was largely because the business models the customer expectations the industry has started changing and it is time for them to take a significant shift. So the company which had done well and in those days when it had done well had rewarded its shareholders well had created enough wealth with the shareholders so that they could come to the rescue of the company and look at a bold turnaround plan. So with this now suddenly the company has become moved away from the brink so a huge step towards survival. So I am alive now right. So along with this they also took some additional other steps. What are the additional other steps they introduced a VRS by which they reduce workforce by fifteen percent because anyway their production downward trend etcetera so this means a twelve crore annual savings right. And then they also relooked at the inventory position they took some steps to sell some of the outdated inventory by special efforts and introduce just in time process introduce leverage bill discounting models and by all this increased the EBITDA margin from eight to eighteen percent in just two years. So this is the major steps they took to first come out of financial distress then what did they do. We will see that in phase two right they started looking at yes we have to move to EV so how do we move to EV and be in business we know the automotive market well but what products we were making where for the cars of the past we need to make parts which are for the vehicles of the future. So this means sometimes giving up what you were doing and going and doing something new so continuously innovating and bringing new products is important for businesses to stay alive and stay relevant and continuous. So the company identified E axles and reduction gears battery management systems with the German partner aluminium diecasting because you can use lightweight parts in an E vehicle then power electronics like inverters chargers which they started working on with the IIT startup. So these are the four areas of focus they took for product innovation right all new things E axles and reduction gears which are going to be important from an E vehicle basis right then battery management systems for which they partnered with a German entity who had the technology and was already been working on it then aluminium diecasting to shift to lighter weight parts and then power electronics which are required in a EV more and more than a regular automotive from the past and for this they work with the IIT startup because again you require some innovative knowledge and innovative patents and technology etcetera. Overall they started investing much more onto R and D as compared to the past. So they significantly increased the R and D expenditure from one and a half percent to five percent more than three times the R and D expenditure it was incurring of late. So these things were done with an intent that it will give you a change and innovation. Now while doing this it's not adequate to stop with innovation and your finance but you need to also clean up your governance and compliance mechanism. We saw that there were issues with governance compliance etcetera so the company took up and the GST disputes on twenty five crore credit input was resolved. So they put a dedicated team to continuously look at it and resolve it so once and for all that matter was closed. Then similarly on the FEMA violation perspective ABC took RBI approvals and regularized all overdue remittances. By doing that they closed the past chapter because otherwise this will be a continuing problem always right. So they again put a dedicated team to work on and obtain RBI approvals for the past violations of course you had to pay some fees and charges and all that closed the matters so the past is completed and closed. Governance improvements they brought in independent directors and the audit committee was restructured thereby strengthening financial oversight. So this was the third step they did. Then they started addressing the risk management and strategic expansion requirement. So what did they do in risk management they first and foremost created a comprehensive risk register of all the risks which can come and impact the company because when you are especially going and expanding you need to be aware what risks can come and impact you and how you are going to be addressing that or mitigating that. So especially in a case like this where you are going to be doing a huge transformation from being ice manufacturer that is internal combustion engine manufacturer to manufacturer of EV components is a huge jump. That huge jump required that you look at all the new risks which can come up in this process and whether those risks are being properly addressed. There could be issues like technological obsolescence there could be issues like input material pricing over a period market volatility on that and then there could be demand issues all this needs to be appropriately considered. Yeah somebody has pointed out liquidity issues right. That's more from a financial perspective which largely we saw in the first one they were addressed by bringing in enough capital and reducing the debt equity. So with all this they looked at some of the specific steps in the process. What was the first step they did we are seeing here right dual sourcing for semiconductors. So instead of relying on single source right they went in for multiple dual sourcing strategy for critical components so that you don't have risk of supply chain stoppages for some reason. For instance some months back you would have all heard of how So with this now suddenly the company is become moved away from the brink. So a huge step towards survival. So I am alive now, right? So along with this, they also took some additional other steps. What are the additional other steps? They introduced a V R S by which they reduced workforce by fifteen percent. Because anyway their production downward trend etcetera. So this means a twelve crore annual savings, right? And then they also relooked at the inventory position. They took some steps to sell some of the outdated inventory by special efforts and introduce just in time process, introduce leverage bill discounting models. And by all this, increase the EBITDA margin from eight to eighteen percent in just two years. So this is the major steps they took to first come out of financial distress. Then what did they do? We will see that. In phase two, right? They started looking at, yes, we have to move to E V. So how do we move to E V and be in business? We know the automotive market well, but what products we were making, where for the cars of the past, we need to make parts which are for the vehicles of the future. So this means sometimes giving up what you were doing and going and doing something new. So continuously innovating and bringing new products is important for businesses to stay alive and stay relevant and continuous. So the company identified E axles and reduction gears, battery management systems with the German partner, aluminium diecasting because you can use lightweight parts in an E vehicle. Then power electronics like inverters, chargers, which they started working on with the I A T startup. So these are the four areas of focus they took for product innovation, right? All new things, E axles and reduction gears which are going to be important from an E vehicle basis, right? Then battery management systems for which they partnered with a German entity who had the technology and was already been working on it. Then aluminium diecasting to shift to lighter weight parts. And then power electronics which are required in a E V more and more than a regular automotive from the past. And for this, they worked with the I T I A T startup because again you require some innovative knowledge and innovative patents and technology etcetera. Overall, they started investing much more onto uh R and D as compared to the past. So they significantly increased the R and D expenditure from one and a half percent to five percent, more than three times the R and D expenditure it was incurring of late. So these things were done with an intent that it will give you a change and innovation. Now while doing this, it's not adequate to stop with innovation and your finance, but you need to also clean up your governance and compliance mechanism. We saw that there were issues with governance, compliance etcetera. So the company took up and the G S T disputes on twenty-five crore credit input was resolved. So they put a dedicated team to continuously look at it and resolve it. So once and for all, that matter was closed. Then similarly on the FEMA violation perspective, A B C took R B A approvals and regularized all overdue remittances. By doing that, they closed the past chapter. Because otherwise this will be a continuing problem always, right? So they again put a dedicated team to work on and obtain R B A approvals for the past violations. Of course, you had to pay some fees and charges and all that, close the matters. So the past is completed and closed. Governance improvements, they brought in independent directors and the audit committee was restructured, thereby strengthening financial oversight. So this was the third step they did. Then they started addressing the risk management and strategic expansion requirement. So what did they do in risk management? They first and foremost created a comprehensive risk register of all the risks which can come and impact the company. Because when you are especially going and expanding, you need to be aware what risks can come and impact you and how you are going to be addressing that or mitigating that. So especially in a case like this where you are going to be doing a huge transformation from being a ice manufacturer, that is internal combustion engine manufacturer to manufacturer of E V components, is a huge jump. That huge jump required that you look at all the new risks which can come up in this process and whether those risks are being properly addressed. There could be issues like technological obsolescence, there could be issues like input material pricing over a period, market volatility on that. And then there could be demand issues, all this needs to be appropriately considered. Yeah, somebody has pointed out liquidity issues, right? That's more from a financial perspective which largely we saw in the first one. They were addressed by bringing in enough capital and reducing the debt equity. So with all this, they looked at some of the specific steps in the process. What was the first process they did, we are seeing here, right? Dual sourcing for semiconductors. So instead of relying on single source, right? They went in for multiple source dual sourcing strategy for critical components so that you don't have risk of supply chain stoppages for some reason. For instance, some months back, you would have all heard of how semiconductor availability from China affected a large number of entities, especially in the auto sector also. Because even the old auto sector uses a lot of electronics today. If you see your card, there are a lot of electronics in it. So that got affected because the semiconductor industry in China underwent some issues because of which there were some disruptions in supplies arising from that, which is what we saw in news sometime back. Similar things can happen because we are dependent on one source. So dual sourcing strategy was looked at. Then from a foreign currency issue problem, they went in for currency hedging but decided on a very, very rational basis internally discussing that fifty percent of the payables will be covered by forward covers. So thereby taking some amount of risk onto the company and some amount of risk being protected. They also looked at product diversification etcetera. So that is the standard process which they looked at to move up into the risk and governance side. So just to recap, from a capital restructuring perspective, they had optimized the weighted average cost of capital by bringing in more capital and reducing the debt reliance. They have reduced the debt equity ratio from two and a half to one point one. They have unlocked dormant factory asset. So they got liquid cash which could again go to reduce debt and the interest. Whereas this dormant plant was not earning any revenue. Then on the working capital side, just in time was introduced, bill discounting was introduced to enhance cash flows. Inventory liquidation was a special exercise was taken up to see that all the old inventories sold and realized. They may be having a value but sitting as a number in your balance sheet is not going to help you with working capital. So better is to kill them by selling and converting to cash. The faster you convert to cash, the cycle is very, very important. So getting rid of the old inventory was another major benefit which they were able to get in this. Then there are capital budgeting things like D C F or I R R or payback for the E V investments because they were looking at some huge strategic investments. These are the models which were used. And in risk management, obviously they would have used that frameworks of scenario analysis and looking at energy sector diversification. So as we were seeing, legacy inventory was being liquidated. New pricing was to be done with E V components, right? So the new pricing would mean that you rework the pricing completely and that would help you. That would help you to improve the way you get your margins etcetera up. Then they also looked at participation in the P L I scheme for cost efficiency. With all this, what happened, their revenue grew to thousand eight hundred crores. Profit of one twenty crore net profit was restored, so they became profitable. E V related sales started contributing thirty percent. Then the company had reached a stage where they were thinking of an expansion, another plant in Vietnam so that they can scale up, right? And have some components being done out of Vietnam for international market also. And they were also looking at a huge I P O, thousand crore I P O being took that. So this is where they went. So look at it, three, four years back in the near bankruptcy scenario, how they turned around themselves to come to a scenario where they could go to market and raise capital. So this is the story of A B C Auto Comp, right? Which went from one end to another. And in this context, now let's look at some of these M C Qs and then the detailed questions. And after the case study, as I told you, we could have some general open questions, time for that also. So the first M C Q question is, in a capital restructuring related question, A B C Auto Components reduced its debt to equity ratio from two point five to one point one during its turnaround. Which of the following actions was least likely, least likely to support this? Rights issue of two hundred crores, sale of non-core assets, voluntary retirement scheme for employees, raising short-term borrowings. Any thoughts on this, any suggestions? Somebody says V R S.
Sale of non-core assets.
Sale of non-core assets, somebody is saying, okay. Anything? C, one more person is saying C. Option C. So I will again reemphasize, right? Which of the following actions was least likely to support this? That is support the debt equity from being reduced, right? So let's look at each of these. Rights issue of two hundred crores, what do you think it did? It increased the equity, so obviously it reduced the debt equity. Then sale of non-core assets, what did it give you? Seventy-five crores cash, so when you get seventy-five crores cash, what do you do? You either reduce your O D account or you repay some of your term loans, correct? So this again reduces debt. The third one, voluntary retirement scheme for employees. Voluntary retirement schemes of course costs some money upfront, but it reduces twelve crores per annum on your requirement. Again, it helps debt equity though delayed. If D was not there, C could have been the answer. Because it says which was the least likely to support this. However, D is raising short-term borrowing, so when you borrow more, what happens? Your debt equity goes up. So you have to be a little careful. Two answers could look to be the answers, so we will go for one. We need to see. So when they use words like least likely or most likely, all that you have to be a little more careful about reading because there could be one which is, if the other one was not there, could be a good choice. For example, if D was not there, C could be a good choice, but B never. B is giving you money, which means your debt equity will get reduced. Hope this is clear. So let's look at the next question. M C Q two is on make or buy decision. Right, make or buy decision. A B C partnered with a German firm for battery management system. So we saw because you need some technology for battery management system and all that. So they tied up with a German firm for that, right? So A B C partnered with a German firm for battery management system instead of an in-house development. What was the most relevant costing rationale behind this decision? To avoid marginal cost of production, to reduce fixed R and D expenditure, to eliminate semi-variable overheads, to mitigate opportunity cost. Any thoughts? Somebody says B R and D, B B D. So till now I have got B and D coming up as answers. Any further thoughts? So B and D, more focused on B and D, right? So obviously there cannot be two right answers, at least in exams, right? Life is different, you could have two right answers. So let's look at the most important thing here, most relevant costing rationale to reduce fixed R and D expenditure. So the biggest contributor for this is R and D expenditure. Internal battery management system development would have involved high fixed costs in R and D. Partnering enabled access to expertise while avoiding upfront capital outflows. Obviously, that will be a cost, German firm is not going to give it free. But that will be linked to maybe some revenue in future etcetera. Your upfront R and D cost is avoided. Trust that's clear and now let's look at the third question in this series. The third question is on forex risk management, right? A forex risk management, A B C heads fifty percent of its foreign payables to mitigate. So for which type of risk they did this? Credit risk, operational risk, currency risk, restivity risk. So I have two Cs, three Cs, four Cs, five Cs, six Cs, all everybody wanted to have C. Okay, let's see. Now before that, I wanted to ask you one general question on this. So what do you mean by hedging fifty percent of the foreign payables? I have to pay so much of foreign payable, why should I not hedge all the hundred percent? Why fifty percent being done? Any thoughts on it, anyone? Like I said, there is never one answer which is always the solution. So it's not that you know hundred percent of foreign payables being hedged is the right thing. There is no such thing, it has to be considered on a case to case. So but basically tell me why somebody would do fifty percent and not hundred percent? Any thoughts on that?
In case they have any export receivables partially, that might take care of fifty percent of, that is natural hedging kind of a thing to that extent of export sales.
Very good, very good, excellent, you said Shokumar, right? Excellent.
Yes, sir.
That's very, one very good reason. So one of the things they look at is, what is a natural hedge for me? I am also not only having foreign payables, but generally I do also export, I have some receivables. So I take a protection. And Prashantji, again, very nice answer. Currency with high volatility. Now if I hedged hundred percent of my foreign payables, right? Do I always benefit? So what happens when I hedge my foreign payable? I have to pay at a fixed price, correct? Let's suppose I have to pay hundred dollars and I am fixing it at eighty-five rupees now and fixing it. So I have to pay eighty-five into hundred on the due date, that is what it means to hedge, right? So but dollar that day could become eighty-three or eighty-seven. In one case I will lose two rupees, in one case I will gain two rupees, right? So where currency is highly volatile, companies do take some portion of the risk on themselves because they say on an average somewhere I will lose, somewhere I will gain, but it will manage out. So I don't take a high percentage of this thing. The third is, there won't credit appetite. See, hedging has a cost, hedging does not come free. Hedging has a cost and hedging has its own downturn that if the prices go the other way, you may actually theoretically lose some money, correct? Most important thing about hedging is it avoids the currency risk on you, but something else on you. It puts a fixed price on you, whereas if market tomorrow drops because the forward, I mean foreign exchange rates globally has dropped, if the component price is dropped, you lose on that because you have to pay at a higher price, right? So there are multiple dimensions to it. So generally a company will evaluate the risks and then take a business call on how much of the risk they will keep on their books and how much they will cover by a hedge. So that is something I wanted to tell. Of course, all of you are right, the answer is C. So answer is not the interesting, I just wanted to also talk about something more on that so that there is a better understanding than what is there only in this one question. So the next question is about regulatory compliance. We saw that the company was having a big problem with FEMA non-compliance related to foreign vendor payments. Which corrective action was most critical to ensure compliance? So is it filing revised G S T returns? Or appointing independent directors? Or obtaining R B A approval for technical technology remittances? Or liquidating excess inventory? Yeah, somebody says C, somebody says C again. It's a spate of C, probably in this case study, everything is C, I am not sure, right? Earlier case study, everything was B. So we have to prepare one case study with everything A, I think next. Okay, so anyway coming to this, obtaining R B A approval is obviously the one which is right on the matter for this regulatory requirement. Then M C Q five is on cost control via V R S. So the V R S scheme implemented by A B C saved twelve crore annually by reducing manpower. So this aligns with which costing principle? Activity based costing, target costing, cost driver analysis, standard costing. I see again a spate of answers there. But let's see what the answers say. D, E, C, C, B, D. So there are many options which have been presented here, fantastic, multiple answers. So let's look at the actual answer. So this is not directly to do with the principle of activity based costing. This is also not target costing because we are not working to a target. It's basically an analysis of cost drivers. Disculpative questions. Analyze the capital restructuring strategies adopted by A B C Auto Components during its turnaround phase. Discuss how these strategies align with the principles of optimal cost structure and cost of capital minimization. So what are we looking at? Analyze the capital restructuring strategies. How these strategies align with the principle of optimal capital structure and cost of capital minimization, right? So cost of capital minimization is also So cost of capital minimization is also a key. Any of you have any thoughts to share? Any suggestions? I saw in the other cases you have all given some good suggestions. Why don't you put some thoughts? Analyze cost and projected cost. Any other thoughts? So we are talking about a capital restructuring strategy, right? So shall we look at the answers? The first one is debt restructuring. It's a capital restructuring strategy, right? What did they do? They negotiated a moratorium which meant what? Get delayed payout so your cash flows will be pushed to the future. And also got extended break key one time taken to meet working after performance so that the company that fulfill its financial, yeah. Extended loan tenures which again pushes the cash flow requirements for debt service. Converted short term debt to long term debt to align with cash flow cycles. Absolutely, right? Then equity infusion is the next strategy. Brought in two hundred crores of money. Reduce WAG by replacing high cost debt with equity. Then asset rationalization, which is again raising money, right? What is dormant, not giving you any return, but has value. So what does it mean? Seventy-five crores of your money is sitting and giving you no return, but you are paying cost for it. Because you have capital in it, you have debt against it etcetera. So instead liquidated at seventy-five crores. So it improves your position, financial position significantly. So these are the capital restructuring strategies. Which, how it is aligned to the principles of optimal capital structure. So bringing a better balance between debt and equity and cost of capital minimization by adjusting the WAG, right? By replacing high cost debt. And also, the second portion which reduces the capital cost minimization is sale of this Pune asset and pumping that money to reduce debt. So what are the alignment with the SFM principles in this? One is the trade-off theory. Balance tax shield benefits of debt with bankruptcies. Higher the debt, the lower the cost. Because normally it is, the theory is that the lenders take a lower rate of return than the investors, that is the equity shareholders. So the expectation of the equity shareholders is higher. For example, the stock market return is fifteen percent plus on an average. Whereas borrowings are made at a much lower rate of maybe ten percent average or less even, or slightly more depending on the type of company. For simplicity sake, let's say ten percent. But even that ten percent is pre-tax because the company gets a tax break of two and a half percent. So the cost of debt is normally much lower than the cost of equity. However, if you leverage the company very heavily on debt, then you are always on the brink of insolvency. So that is exactly what prompted this company to change the position. From two and a half debt equity position to one point one. How did they do it? One major contributor was two hundred crores being brought in as equity. The seventy-five crores is an asset conversion, so let's not worry too much about it. The two hundred crores is brought in as equity to replace a debt which is at a lower cost. Comparative, after debt tax. But the idea is that if I keep that kind of a thing, it may actually kill my company. I may have a good cost structure theoretically, but it can kill the company. That's why it has to be always, everything has to be balanced. Then picking order theory, right? Preferred internal funds over external debt, that is asset sale where you can't use it. That comes as a priority. Whereas if this company was sitting on surplus funds, then it's a great potential. These kind of assets untouched, leaving them untouched is a great potential because seventy-five crores today could become hundred and fifty crores in a few years' time. The appreciation could be significantly large compared to other components. So I may not have touched it if other things were appropriate. Cost of capital was optimized by reducing financial distress costs essentially. So why debt would have been higher in this company's case? Debt rates would have been higher primarily because the company is under distress. So obviously when the company is having a two point five debt equity, the lending rates are not going to be the same ten percent, it's going to be far higher. So by reducing the debt equity rate, we are also able to bring in, bring down some rational rates to the debt competent. Yeah, so that brings the holistic position on question one. Then let's look at question two. Evaluate the make or buy decision of ABC Auto Components to partner with a German firm for battery management system instead of in-house development. Justify the decision using relevant costing concepts. So what costing concepts would you use in first of all evaluating this? Any thoughts from anyone? Any thoughts there?
It reduces the capital cost, fixed capital cost.
Okay. R and D cost will be lower, reduce dependence on German supplier. So what will reduce dependence on German supplier? Only if you manufacture in-house, right? EV is new, so R and D will be high, yes? Absolutely. Good, good thoughts, right? Let's look at it in a structured manner. So first and foremost, what cost factors are considered? Like somebody was mentioning about R and D costs, yes, very important, right? Somebody has also mentioned after sales support. So cost factors, fixed costs. You are avoiding high R and D investments which are fixed costs, right? The opportunity costs, the next thing, the saved capital for core competencies, you can use it, right? The money you are saving on these could be used for other products. Because for every product you might not get a tie-up. So where you are getting tie-up, you take that, so you release capital there, which capital can be used for some other thing. Otherwise probably you may not have enough capital to do all the four which you are getting in. So these are the advantages of doing that. The strategic advantage is time to market. Faster BMS deployment via licensed technology because the German firm has already done something about it. That's why you are going and partnering with them. If you have to do your own in-house development, you have to set up a team and then they will take time to develop some product or some concepts, then test it, then it comes off market. So this is ready. Tomorrow you are in the market. So that is another major advantage of, from a strategic dimension. And from a risk mitigation perspective, the shared technology, right? We are sharing the technology risk because technology can become obsolete in no time. So in this case, instead of taking the whole risk on us, we are sharing it with somebody who is doing it for somebody else also or for them, their own requirements elsewhere. So we are sharing, so the burden which will come and hit us probably if it fails or if it suddenly goes down is lower. So that is the second side of the story which we need to consider. Fair enough. So let's continue on this further. The costing concept applied are first of all relevant costing. You compare the in-house development cost versus licensing fees, all right? And the outsourcing benefits. What is the leverage partners economies of scale because of which he might be able to give you at a much lower rate than it would be if you develop yourself and you try to be required on a lower base which you will have. Your scale of operations may be much smaller. So whatever R and D cost you incur will have to be absorbed within that. Whereas he might have a much bigger volume over which he can spread his cost. So overall it might be that economies of scale benefit will also come to you. Maybe all these needs to be evaluated, right? So overall the decision is aligned with cost efficiency and strategic focus on EV. So one side is the strategic focus to get it at the same time it cost efficiency. So somebody has raised a very valid point. Under risk mitigation, the partner will be in continuous process of upgrading his BMS technology. So it mitigates obsolescence risk, right? So that's a major advantage. That's why when you share it, it reduces your risk significantly. You may not continue to deploy so much because for him BMS is the core, probably. I'm just putting a theory there. BMS is the core, so he will continuously keep updating it. For you it is one of the things, so you may not continuously keep being able to do it, right? So the possibility of technology obsolescence being addressed by continuous upgrades is also better. So your risk is better addressed. That's a very valid point and a nice point, I think, Prashant, right? Okay, very good. Now we come to the last question on this. Discuss the regulatory compliance challenges faced by ABC Auto during its transformation. Explain how the company addressed FEMA, GST and corporate governance issues, right? So let's take FEMA as the first thing. What do you, what do you have to comment on it? Let's look at that first. We'll go one by one so that we get some answers. Any thoughts on that? Okay, somebody has put regulatory approvals, taking RBI approval, foreign exchange disbursements after approvals for technology payments, right? Brilliant. Okay, what about GST? Any thoughts on GST? Okay. So some have put comments here, wrote up license, company have to pay IGST for import, duty drawback. Okay. And what about corporate governance issues? Any thoughts on that? Okay, independent directors to have oversight of the corporate affairs and constitution of committees. Any other thoughts? Okay, so let's look at this. On a FEMA compliance, yes, first is to get the overdue foreign vendor payments regularized, right? And getting RBI approval for the payouts to avoid penalties. So this is the steps on FEMA compliance. And for GST, there was a twenty-five crore tax dispute which we were talking about, right? So specific addressing of that. And wrote up benefits for exports to improve cash flows which they were missing out in the past. As was discussed in the case study. The, I suppose all of you had access to the full case study in your, this thing also, I suppose, right? Then corporate governance, like it was mentioned, yes, bringing in new independent directors for better oversight. By that, the audit committee was also strengthened so that future non-compliances don't happen. So what are the key takeaways from all this? Proactive compliance prevents financial penalties and also reputational damage. And this is aligned with the Companies Act and FEMA requirements. So they are also expecting you to have mechanisms to ensure you are compliant rather than address non-compliances. So the way Companies Act looks at governance is not to violate and then rectify that, but to have mitigations against violations occurring. So that is the concept of this whole governance requirements. Now with this, we are coming to the end of the second case study, right? So as I promised, there is a time available for, oh, there is one bonus case question also here, sorry. We continue with this question also. So let's finish this and then we will take other general questions. Okay, during ABC Auto's turnaround phase, the company invested heavily in R and D for EV components, right? To encourage innovation, the company claimed deductions under section thirty-five two AB of the Income Tax Act for its in-house R and D facility. However, during a tax assessment, the income tax department disallowed a portion of the reduction citing the following issues. So this is a tax implication coming from the R and D expenses. Ineligible expenditure. So first issue raised was ineligible expenditure. Certain administrative and employment for costs were included in the R and D claim. Second is inadequate documentation. The company failed to maintain proper project wise expenditure records as prescribed by Department of Scientific and Industrial Research. So Department of Scientific and Industrial Research has given lot of requirements about documentation maintenance. The second reason for which they disallowed some amount was that the company failed to maintain proper project wise expenditure records. The third one was non-compliance with approval. The R and D facility was not approved by the The R and D facility was not approved by the prescribed authority before claiming deductions. So in this, what is expected is to discuss the tax implications of the above scenario for A B C Auto. And what steps the company should take to resolve the dispute and ensure compliance with thirty five two A B in the future. So any thoughts on this? Let's look at that. What are the implications for A B C Auto components? And also, what can an additional tax liability? It's not only the tax which will come, but there will also be interest. Because if you compute that tax has not been paid within the due date as per advanced tax payment requirements, etc., so there will also be interest on it. So there is a tax and interest on tax which becomes a implication. First and foremost. Right? The second is, so not only the tax but interest, the second is penalty risk. So there could be dispute on whether this will attract penalty under two seventy A or not. And penalty could range from fifty to two hundred percent. Of course, it needs to be disputed, needs to be proved, otherwise, etc. There is a potential for dispute always. And dispute itself costs money. Right? Cash flow impact, the company will have liquidity strain for this tax demand. And even if you want to go on appeal and all that, you have to pay twenty percent deposit, etc., which itself could be a strain when there is a huge amount involved. So how do you resolve the dispute? You file appeal with the C I T appeals with supporting documents, right? So that is the first process of trying to resolve the issue. Or if it is erroneous, then file for rectification under one fifty four. If it is factual erroneous, right? Then you go and negotiate with the tax authorities by submitting a revised computation, excluding ineligible expenses where it is truly ineligible.
What does T S I R approval stand for? In this context?
See, uh, department, see, under thirty five two A B, if you are going to run a facility for which you want to claim R and D expenses under thirty five two A B, that facility should have been approved by Department of Science and Scientific and Industrial Research as a facility which can run that R and D. So this approval should have been obtained when you set up the R and D facility. If it is going to be under that T S I R scheme. These things are losing relevance slowly because in in the earlier days.
Right at the beginning, right at the beginning, the approval is required even before starting with the process.
Yes, yes. Yeah, when the R and D facility is set up, you should take an approval. You can't claim in tax and then go for approval. You get the D S I R approval, then only you can claim tax benefit under this section. Why it was introduced in those days? That's what I was trying to give a historical background. So although of course it's not of relevance to our exams. More for understanding. There used to be matters where there used to be a weighted deduction which was permitted. So not just hundred percent, if you spend hundred percent, you can get a higher deduction. Second, another beneficial thing which happens is even capital expenditure on R and D is fully deductible. Whereas normally you will get only depreciation benefit over a P V I. Right? In in R and D cases, you could claim a full depreciation, full deduction in year one. So uh, what can say? Uh, early deductions which are possible. Which benefits companies. So these are the reasons why they had introduced at that time an approval by the department to clear who can get this benefit. Yeah. And documentation, very good documentation has to be there and it has to be preserved. That is very important. And then audit requirement is there is an audit report which is to be filed by the due date. So the last question, so two bonus questions added here. Last question on this is part of its turnaround strategy, A B C expanded into export market. Supply M E V components to Southeast Asian buyers under zero rated supplies without payment of I G S T. The company claimed the refund of accumulated I T C under sixteen sixteen for input use in exports. However, during a G S T audit, the authorities disallowed three point two crore of I T C refunds citing the following reasons. One is mismatched documentation. Shipping bills filed with customs did not match with the details in the G S T returns. Ineligible I T C, the company erroneously included I T C on employee transportation services, which is a block credit under section seventeen five. Delayed filing, refund applications were filed after the two-year deadline under rule ninety six of C G S T rules. Right? So here also analyze the G S T implications. What corrective actions should the company take to resolve one refund dispute, right? And ensure compliance. See, in all this, we should understand. Case may get determined one way or the other. Many times the disputes are on gray area. Sometimes it's on very clear crystal gray area where either you will lose or you will win. But many times it's on gray area. So it also is important to ensure how we are compliant going forward so that we don't have a regular dispute happening. So let's look at in that context. What is this that happens in the case of a G S T issue like this? Implication heavy penalty and I T C reversals. Corrective action is to make proper reconciliation on a timely manner. These are some thoughts which somebody has put. Let's look at the overall answers. Right? Now, first and foremost, the implication of G S T disallowance would mean working capital blockage. So three point two crores will be stuck there till something is decided. You would have normally considered that that money will come because you had filed for refund. Right? So that's a large sum suddenly gets stuck. Then there is a potential for interest on it. And also penalty. Penalty will come only if there is a fraudulent intent. So obviously, it is something which will be a gray area again. Maybe there will be some dispute, etc. Possibly, right? Then it also impacts your export competitiveness. Delayed refunds or disallowance in refund increases your cost. So obviously, to that extent, it makes you less competitive in pricing for the foreign market. So these are the implications of the disallowance. Step to resolve the dispute is to rectify the documentation error. Wherever there is a error between shipping bills and G S T returns, get it rectified. The other possibility is file a letter of undertaking for future exports to avoid I G S T blockage. So file L U T. You can go on an appeal process, but that is purely on the dispute side. As I said, ultimately, the dispute might be in favor or otherwise. You may have to reverse ineligible I T C wherever you have agreed. You have to reverse the ineligible I T C like the employee transportation. It's black and white. Where it's gray, you can maybe dispute if you have a different view. And that will go into the appeal process. You may win, you may not win. That's left to the judiciary to decide, but at least you have some action possible where you know it's an error you have to rectify. So you have to reverse ineligible I T C like the employee transportation which was pointed out where we have wrongly taken that. Compliance measures for the future. Timely filing, one thing, right? Especially the refund applications within two years so that you don't lose out on the collections. Because that is money. Right? Somebody said check data from the Icegate portal. Yes, do some reconciliations. So here also you will find shipping bills with Icegate integration, right? Now today that is also possible. Expose invoice is mentioning supply band for export under L duty. Bank realization certificates to prove for realizations, right? All these can be added. Benefits which you can bring it. Then segregation of export supplies and domestic supplies. Maintain separate records so that you are able to handle the input credit and other issues in a uh, appropriate manner. Even even not just issues but even queries, etc. In an appropriate manner. Now with that, we are done with the presentation and the questions which are coming from that. Of course, we are open, we still have some more time. Right? Any queries, anything you have, please you can raise. I think you are all going for September exams from what I understand. So if it's a query about how the exam will be, how some administrative things should be addressed, etc. Please raise it later. Maybe somebody from the department could answer. Put more on the subject, what queries you have on the subject matters which are coming under I B S. This is a fantastic concept which has been introduced and very very, very specifically required concept into the examination pattern because this is how you are going to find your actual practical life studies coming up. In fact, some of the case studies I've used over the last, this thing is what we have actually done. And some of them today also, the one of the cases exactly not exactly, but it's largely based on some other company which had done something similar. So these are the kind of things you are going to always face. Your questions are never going to be on one subject in real life. Only in exam paper it will be like that. So this I B S is a fantastic tool to mold yourself also more than the exams. So please do ask any questions you have on the any, any questions you have on today's case studies or generally, we can discuss that. I may not have all the answers, but we can surely discuss. On first case, it's mentioned if you apply green energy like solar, the units can't even reach break even. Generally, they are sick units gradually. What is your view? Sorry, can you, can you clarify that question again? So from, we cannot generate profits from solar units. See, there are companies which make money from that also. There are companies which lose money from that. So what is required is a a practical and pragmatic analysis. Many a times, projects fail because people get carried away with what they project. So your, your business performance is also going to be based on your projection. Then the projections have to be grounded in reality. If the projections are not grounded in reality, the actual performance later may nowhere meet the projected numbers. So coming back to the specific thing. If you put solar units or this thing, it's not necessary that solar units should only be a loss-making proposition. There are cases where it has been done with a positive contribution coming. At the same time, if it is not appropriately done, it may not give the benefits. For instance, I can give one example, the Cochin International Airport has nearly all its power supplied by solar from their own solar farm. Because it is their own solar farm, they have the space and they are able to do it. It is positive to them. But if our projects are not properly evaluated and done, well, that, that can happen in every, every business. Yes, solar market depends on government subsidy. It's also another big reason why it could fail. How to prepare for I B S? I mean, as a layman, I am not the expert here. As a layman, maybe Ajit Kumar G or somebody else from the board could throw better light. My own suggestion would be look at the huge, huge repository of case studies which are available on the platform for you, right? Institute has come out with so many case studies that nearly anything and everything you can think of, you will learn from that. It's a wonderful large thing. Ajit Kumar G, any specific thoughts on that?
What sir?
On how to prepare for the I B S and what best study for?
Uh, sir, Deepa sir will guide.
Okay, so maybe that question we will park it for a later date when Deepak G is back.
Yes, sir.
And he will also be present in the uh, sessions. In exam, M C Q and this two two question will be from the same case study. Yes, actually, one case study and uh, questions from that is how each one will come. There will be multiple such things. So there will be a case study and questions from that. There will be another case study and questions from that. That's how the exam will come. Any other questions? Somebody has asked about specifically what is covered under thirty five two A B. Biotechnology, yes, biotechnology largely, yes, that's what is sent up. The thirty five two A B. Right? It's not only biotechnology, it's also for uh, certain other items of manufacture which are coming from such uh, research. Correct. Article center eleven schedule. Any other questions? Yeah, I think then we can close the session for the day. Thanks all for the patient listening. Uh, anything you have, you could always also take it up in the next sessions. Looking forward, thanks a lot for your patience. Thank you, thank you all. Ajit Kumar G, thanks a lot.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Session over, we can close for the day and thanks, thanks a lot for all.